Show 10 o'clock, so let's call this meeting to order. Welcome everyone for your attendance. Today is Tuesday, the 20th day of April, 10 a.m. This is the Weber County Commission meeting. Want to welcome everybody that joins us on our Zoom meeting this morning. And we're going to start today, meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance by Sarah Swan, invocation by Commissioner Jenkins and the thought of the day, Commissioner Harvey, let's go to that point. Sarah, I think you're with us.
Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sarah. Commissioner Jenkins?
Okay, there we go, let's pray. Our only Father, we give you thanks this day for the opportunity we have to be in the positions we are, the opportunity we have of serving the people of this county, especially under these very trying circumstances that we find ourselves meeting today. We pray that Thou would attend us, blessed with thy Spirit, that the question, the decisions we make will be good decisions and they'll support our county and the things we're trying to do in it. We are grateful for all the wonderful people who work for this county and the efforts and all the work that they put in to keep the county doing well. We pray for these things and ask that Thou watch over and be with us this day. Protect those in the county who are sick, we pray for all of them. We do this in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, amen.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Commissioners. Today, my thought has to do with choices. And the choices we make now. One of the things that's been quite poignant recently are the choices Weber County's made. As I've looked at the numbers for our positive tests, our hospitalization numbers, a lot of the numbers that the Weber Morgan Health Department gets out to our, all of the residents of Weber County every day. You know, I look at the choices people are making and it appears, based on the numbers that Weber County currently has, that we're still, while there have been unfortunately some deaths and while unfortunately people have been infected and even more have been infected that their home, that haven't been hospitalized and even more so still are infected that haven't been tested. We encourage everybody to get tested. We, there are plenty of places now that you can find those testing sites at corona. But I want to say a couple of things as it relates to some other choices. Our numbers are good because of the choices our citizenry have made and to stay home and to stay safe. We've made some choices, there are three things that happened during a pandemic we learned back in 1918. And one of it is physical health, that's paramount. Another one that's also critical is mental health, people being isolated. We're conscious of that. Yet a third one is the health of our economy. And I'm grateful to be a part of a commission that is progressive. Last week on Wednesday, we made some announcements in a partnership with Weber and Davis County to look for some openings here on the first and second of May. It would be a very soft opening and was described as like turning a dimmer switch on a light bulb. We're not turning the light bulb, we're not turning the switch all the way on. We're just going to kind of turn and put the power to the, to the bulb and there'll be a nice warm, soft glow, a soft opening as we continue on. But in this, in this, as we choose things, I hope that we'll still choose to be safe as we turn the warm glow on. We'll mask up, we'll wash our hands frequently. We'll try to not touch our faces, just some reminders. But again, I'm reminded of a couple of other things, choices. And recently I was tagged on the Facebook post by my friend Luis Lopez, who's an Ogden City Councilman. And he said that he's got a sign in his front yard, similar to a real estate sign. Some, some of you know what those real estate signs look like, but it says, choose happiness. Choose happiness and boy, I think that's, that's really good. You know, another one, one that I've been using a lot lately is if you have, if you have a choice between being right and being kind, I hope you choose kind. It'll serve you well. So those are my thoughts today, Chair Foror, thank you.
Thank you, excellent thoughts, Commissioner. Harvey, I appreciate that very much. Let's move now to public comments. Shelley, I don't have any notification, we've had any public comments to be addressed unless you tell me otherwise.
I don't have any.
Nothing there, okay, thank you. And just for everybody's information, it's our plan that this will, at this point in time, obviously subject to change, but right now we're planning next Tuesday to have our regular scheduled commission meeting in the chambers. Obviously, we will be living up to the guidelines of social distancing, both for any public officials as well as members of the public. But that's our plan, starting a week from today. So we've enjoyed these Zoom meetings, but we're looking forward to and hopeful that we can start getting back to regular scheduled business as quickly as possible. Anyway, thank you very much. Let's move now to consent items. F1, request for approval of warrants 2688 through 2702 and 449048 through 449243 in the amount of $1,207,658.7. Two, requests for approval of purchase orders in the amount of $101,284.81. Three, requests for approval of minutes for the meeting held on April 21st, 2020. Item four, request for approval of surplus office chair. Five, letter in support to the State of Utah Department of Natural Resources Division of Parks and Rec to purchase property in Weber County near Monte Cristo, Snowmobile Parking Lot. Those are the five consent items. Commissioners, questions or comments? Before we go to Ricky for explanation.
I have none.
Mr. Harvey?
None.
Ricky, you want to review those with us?
Ricky, you're still muted.
Ricky, you want to turn your mic on?
Oh, I can't believe I did that.
Welcome.
Good morning. Okay, we issued nine purchase orders this week for $101,000. Fifty-nine percent of that amount, or $59,000, is for the Health Department. And that was primarily to, to replace two scheduled fleet vehicle replacements. Fourteen percent, or $14,000, is for the library and that will purchase stanchions, office supplies and some PCs. Twelve percent, or $12,000, is for the jail and that's the annual service agreement for the body scanner. Two hundred and eleven checks we issued this week for $1.2 million. Twenty-nine percent of that amount, or $351,000, is quarter preservation funds that was, that were used to purchase land along Skyline Drive. Twenty-five percent of that amount, or $307,000, is escrow release to the Ridge subdivision. Twelve percent, or $142,000 is for construction projects on 12th Street as well as North Street in Ogden. And then 10% or $129,000 are the monthly housing payments made via the Weber Housing Authority. That's it.
Thank you, Ricky. Questions, Commissioners?
The only thing I can say, Gage, is it's obvious when you go through those checks, that the Weber Housing Authority is much more active right now than they've been in the past. Boy, there's a ton of checks on there from them.
There was, yeah. And obviously people are applying more for relief vouchers, etc. In this time of need, so. And it's great, we have that organization, the Weber Housing Authority, that helps these people, Commissioner, so. Appreciate that. Any other comments? If not, I'm ready for a motion.
I'd make a motion.
Ricky, do you have any more? Before I second, do you have any more information on that Skyline Drive? Can you just help me with that real quick?
Just that it's purchase of land for future construction. So that we have, we own the land where we can extend out that road.
Okay.
And that's used, those are transportation funds. Those are come out of that 1% sales tax.
Isn't that part of the Bonneville Shoreline Trail?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah.
Point of clarification, that's north end Skyline Drive, not south end Skyline Drive.
Correct, that's up in Pleasant View, yeah.
That's, thank you very much. That's, that was my question, is I just, I wanted to differentiate between the two as much as that's the case. And so there, there's where my question lies. So I, with that, Chair Foror, I'll make a, I'll second that motion that's on the table.
Thank you very much. We have a motion for approval of the consent items by Commissioner Jenkins, a second by Commissioner Harvey. All layos as a favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries, consent items approved as discussed. Action items, let's go to action items. G1, request for approval of resolution by the County Commissioner of Weber County declaring the county intent, county's intent to pick up a certain percentage of certain public safety employees' contributions to the Utah State Retirement System. And we'll hear now from Sarah Swan. Sarah, you're up.
Good morning, Commissioners. What you have before you is a resolution, our state legislature this year passed a requirement that employees in the tier two, excuse me, public safety employees in the tier two hybrid retirement system contribute 2.27% to their own retirement. The legislation allows counties to pick up that cost on behalf of those employees in order to help our public safety employees and to maintain a competitive stance in the recruiting market. We would like to cover the costs for these employees. So it requires that we do a resolution to describe our intent to cover these costs. And so this resolution is doing that. So in addition to covering it for the hybrid plan, it also requires us to contribute the same amount to those involved in the 401k plan. So we'll be making an equal contribution to both. Again, it's 2.27% only for public safety employees. This resolution will end if the County Commission chooses to end it or if the law changes.
Thank you for that. Is that all, Sarah?
Yes, that's it.
So give me the, was it 2.4%?
2.27.
Two point, okay, got it, okay. So that brings it, and basically we're already contributing about 2%?
Actually, the, the cost increased for us already 2% this year, so it will be 2% and then this additional 2.27 that we will pick up.
Got it.
That's correct.
Okay. And, and this was basically mandated by the legislature, but gave, gave the counties the option to cover it or pass it on to the employee.
That's correct. And if we were to pass it on to the employee, it is an after-tax rate for them. So it, the cost for them could be heavy again, since it's after taxes, it's not very beneficial to them. So I think this was a good faith effort from us.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioners, questions, comments?
If you remember, Gage, a couple of years ago, the legislature passed this tier two relief where they started paying public safety employees more money. And it changed that whole thing. And I was one of the few that objected to that whole thing. And, but it got passed anyway by the legislature and we pay a lot more now because of it.
Yeah, I agree, yeah. Yeah, another, you know, you got to love these unfunded mandates that come from above, but I, I think I'm, I'm with you. I looked at the cost to the counties and, and, and/or the cities, whatever the case may be. So Commissioner Harvey, comments, questions?
The only thing I have is a wise friend that I work with recently told me that not everything the state legislature does is accurate.
Well, I, I heard that same story. I don't know if it was accurate, but it was, maybe it was right.
Yeah, okay, that, I was, thank you for, thank you for clarifying, no.
I've heard that saying, I've heard that same quote a couple of times for some reason, but, yeah, but.
I love, I love it when they, I love it when they, especially were asked to hold down property taxes and have to absorb these additional costs. It's not that I am against the program at all, but I, but I would have liked to have had a revenue stream to accompany the mandate, and so I agree with that. But with that, Mr. Chair, if you're ready for a motion?
I'm ready.
I'll make the motion that we accept item, action item number G1. That's presented by our Human Resource Director, Director, Ms. Sarah Swan.
Second.
Commissioners, that is resolution 11.
Resolution, bottom line?
11. Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenkins?
Aye.
And Chair Foror?
Aye. Thank you very much, motion carries unanimously. Okay, let's go to G2, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and the Granite Construction Company for the North Ogden Divide project. And Tucker White is with us, I believe. Tucker, go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners, so.
Good morning.
This, I have two contracts for you here. This first one's with Granite Construction. This has to do with our road construction project that we're going to be doing this summer on the North Ogden Divide. We've selected granite and we feel like we're excited to get going on this. And I don't know if you have any questions for this contract? We'll kind of talk a little bit about it. But if you have any questions, go ahead.
You want to just explain it to us, Tucker? I think we're fairly familiar with it, but give us the details.
Yeah, so we're.
Cost, etc.
They're going to be the contractor, they're going to be the ones out there doing the work. The, the majority of the work that we're doing on this North Ogden Divide will be doing a lot of storm drain crossings and installing some catch basins. And then installing some sections of retaining walls. And then we'll resurface the road in some areas where it's kind of sloughing off. So most of it, but a lot of it has to do with, with the drainage to get that road off, or the water off the road and, and where it should be and not damaging the road.
So Tucker, what is the price of this contract?
So, let me pull it up. The, the price for granite is, oh, I had it right here. One second, I apologize. Sorry, I just got to pull up my place over here. So granite has, has bid the, the project at 1.8, 1.5 almost. And that's where, that's all their, their materials and time and stuff like that. And then we're going to have a construction management group in there. They'll be less than that, obviously, I think there's at 1.0136,000. So just over, is that 2.2 or something like that? That's including the construction and the construction management team.
My understanding is Tucker, we're using Prop 1 funds on this? These will be WACOG?
Yeah, no, Prop 1, they're not WACOG, yeah.
They're Prop 1?
Correct.
Okay, okay, good, all right. Got other questions?
So one of the concerns that we had was there was going to be a project on, on the canyon, or Ogden Canyon, that Utah was going to be doing. Since this whole COVID-19 stuff's going on, their supplier for, for the material is out of California and they haven't been able to, to get the material they needed. So that project will be, will be pushed back another year. So we don't have any conflict enclosures with the, with Ogden Canyon and our project, the North Ogden Divide.
Oh, that's good to know.
Yeah, that's helpful. What's our start date, Tucker?
So it was going to be the first of June, you know, as soon as, as schools got out. But with the, the schools not going back in session, we're going to have, we're going to have a start date of hopefully May 18th. We're going to get some materials onsite and get going that, that day.
Perfect, good.
Motion, motion to approve the contract.
Got a motion to approve, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Second by Commissioner Harvey. No other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye, motion carries, thank you Tucker, contract's approved. Let's move now to action item G3, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Stanley Consultants, Inc. for construction management for the North Ogden Divide project. Tucker, I'm assuming this is the 136,000 you just discussed on construction management?
Yep. So yeah, they'll just be up there, they'll be our, our eyes and ears up there, making sure all that, they're meeting the specs and we're going to have a good product in the, in the end of this, this project.
Okay. Questions, Commissioners?
Now with that, Mr. Chair, if you're ready for a motion?
Please do.
I'll make that motion that we accept the contract as presented by Mr. White with, with the Stanley Consultants for the North Ogden Divide on construction management.
Okay, we have a motion with Commissioner Harvey, do we have a second?
Yes, I will second it and I'd like to comment on that.
Go ahead.
You know, I pressed back against our engineering department, why we couldn't do that ourselves. And when we looked at the price of this bid versus what it would take us to do it, the, the, the price was so close that I was persuaded that it was probably a good thing to do. So with that, I second.
Thank you, and let me just make a comment, we did have that discussion, Mr. Jenkins, I appreciate that. One of the things that we looked at with this Stanley, with the construction management was if we did this internally, it would probably require us to put on more full-time staff. And at this point in time, it was more economically feasible for the long-term to consult this out. Especially as we look at possible incorporations in the unincorporated area of Weber County. I think it's a wise, wise move for, for future cash flow purposes, so.
Right.
With that, we have a motion by Commissioner Harvey, a second by Commissioner Jenkins, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries, thank you. Let's move now to item four, request for approval of a contract by and between Weber County and Doby Construction for the installation of the water line, the new archery park. Mr. Todd Ferrari.
Good morning, Commissioners and others. In front of you, you have a contract between Doby and Weber County as stated. This contract is for $86,500. That brings a eight-inch water line with a connection at 26th and F Street onto Ogden City's ancient infrastructure, we'll just say. And brings 2,660 feet down, two fire hydrants, one one-inch culinary connection and one six-inch fire system connection on the project. We were allowed to use all native soils for bedding since we're in sand. We went through the RFP process. Jason and I did that work and they came back at the price stated, the second one was $121,000. We've had really good luck with this company, they're a smaller company. They've done work onsite, very meticulous. We kind of followed the drainage work they did and, and kind of watched their progress because we knew they would put in for this as well. Since this is not on a main road or a thoroughfare, we have a little more time with it. So the money was a good value for us to save in this project. So any questions?
My only comment, question Todd, is that this seems to be a very fair price. When you look at the per foot price to lay this, I'm way impressed.
Yeah, like I said, when Jason saw that come through, and I appreciate, you know, he brought that up. And my answer to him was if we were going to be going down 12th Street where we had traffic concerns and timeframes to work with, then this would not be our company. They're a little bit smaller, smaller crew, but we will be in the road for approximately four to five hours to connect into a very small road. We've met with, the companies on that street, let them know. We'll be able to divert some of the semis going down that road to the plant. And for this type of a project and that amount of dollar savings, I think they're an excellent choice.
Good to know, Todd, another questions?
I just, I, I, I continue to be absolutely impressed with what you're doing and what the team is doing out there, Todd, in a, in an area that was considered a landfill. A, a, just a piece of junk property years ago when I was growing up. And now we've got trails that interconnect, an incredible fort, a historic Fort Buena Ventura that's right there. It all connects and now we've got state-of-the-art, all-access, all-season accessibility for, for people to, to art, to do some archery inside. It'll be, it'll be just absolutely phenomenal and we're looking forward to. What's that date of the anticipated date of that opening again?
We're shooting for somewhere first or second week of July to open. We were pushed back obviously with the water issue we had. Just a little more info, thanks to our engineering department, Gary and Chad Meyerhoff for, for working on me with a septic plan. We will be doing that work ourselves. That saves us about another 15 grand. Chad is able to inspect along with obviously the Health Department. That will get underway, we'll be digging those holes for the two tanks on the sixth. So between, you know, legal with our contracts, engineering and our crew, I would think by the end of this project, we will have saved probably $150,000 in doing the work ourselves. And obviously at this time, even though these are restricted funds and grants from the state, huge importance, so.
So no county funds there, no, no county funds there, Todd, is that right?
Yeah, as of right now, no. Jennifer had put in one last grant to the state that should top us out, you know, we're hoping. We'll see what that comes back, but if you look at what we currently have, which is about 1.2, a little over 1.6 million dollars. And then the savings and, and that last bit into outdoor rec grant, if we do get that piece, we're in pretty good shape. It was a big team to put this together and I couldn't have done it without everybody.
Thank you, Todd, that's great work. Questions, questions, comments, Commissioners?
You know, Todd, I go out there about once a week and check that. And where you've graded the parking and you can see on the east side where you've got some shooting lanes you're setting up against that hill. And it's just really starting to take place. Now they've, or take shape, now that they've enclosed it, got the roof on and it just really looks nice. You can look at the future there now and it's impressive.
It was very nice, DNR came out to take a look because obviously they're a large funding partner. And it was, it was nice to hear them comment that we go and see projects all the time and it's nice to drive up. And it is substantially bigger and greater than they anticipated, which, you know, it is. It's all, if you haven't seen it, it's a little shocking, but you know, we promoted Mike Luna to the manager, phenomenal job so far. And it, as you all know, it's nice to have a concept. But when you walk away and come back the next day and see that progress, it makes things much easier to say the least, so.
Looks good.
That's great, great work, Todd. That's going to be a venue that we can enjoy for this community for years to come. So with that, we have a motion for approval. I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair. Thank you, motion by Commissioner Harvey.
And I will second it.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries, thank you. You got a contract, Todd, thank you very much for the work.
And do you guys want to hear a quick, we are opening parks as a.
Go ahead.
So all of our parks will be opening. North Fork Park and Weber Memorial will have individual campsites opening, not group sites. Restrooms will be opening. Thursday, we're putting up about 100 signs having to do with social distancing, use of restrooms, things like that. And we have had, I would guess, 20 plus calls a day. As you said earlier about people needing to get out for their sanity, it's here. So we will be monitoring that very closely. And let's get a report back to you on how that first weekend goes, but I think we're ready.
Looking forward to that report, it should be a great weekend for that, Todd.
Yeah, we would like to say it will be a soft opening, but I think it will be a, a little more than that, so.
Well, if you look at what happened at Sand Hollow this past weekend, that might give you an indication.
Yeah, everyone's knowing what time can we come in. So I think we'll be very cognizant of opening gates and monitoring. And I'll be up there this weekend as well, just to get a visual on what's going on and give the camp hosts some help, so.
That'd be great, thank you very much.
You bet, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, anything else, Todd?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Todd, the water system up there is fixed and operational now.
Well, sorta. So we have filled off of the old system, the new line reached us yesterday. We have a meeting today because there is no water currently coming through the old pipe and there is no water going down to Wadman and Coal Canyon. And so there is a feeling that there potentially is a break up above both of us. up above both of us, um, somewhere. Um, but we are full and they are full. And there is equipment and people going to find that as we speak. Uh, the last piece for us to connect the new system is due in today, which is the pancake filter. So as you know, there'll be new boxes, a test port, a filter, and a mechanical gallons per minute that will be installed and we expect that new system, which is really just a new pipe for our portion. And those will be installed, if not Friday, early next week to switch this over, but we left the old one intact, so we are currently using that.
Well, keeps it abreast of what's happening.
Yeah, we just fought snow. We had to get a skid loader up there for a day just to clear the snow. We're still got about two feet of snow, uh cold water. That's very shaded areas.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Todd.
Aye, gentlemen.
Appreciate it. So Commissioners, let's move now to our public hearing. And uh just for uh information purposes, for anybody that's listening to this, um, you can call into the public hearing and make comments by calling 1-253-215-8782. And the session code is 943-567-209. That's also available on our website if you want to check that out. With that, Commissioners, I would entertain a motion to adjourn our public meeting and go into a public hearing. So moved? Second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we're now in a public hearing. And the public hearing intent is to hear from Christie Dahlberg dealing with Community Development Block Grant, CDVG, uh, which would be the first public hearing for the CARES Act funding. And I believe Christie is with us. Christie, time's yours.
Thank you, Chair. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Can.
Okay, um, thanks Chair and thanks Commission for having me. Um, I want to apologize for any confusion there might have been last week um for some rescheduling that had to happen. Um, so like the Commissioner said, I'm here to um talk about the CARES Act funding that was allocated to the Community Development Block Grant Program. So the purpose of this public hearing is to provide citizens with pertinent information about the Community Development Block Grant Program and allow for discussion of possible applications for CDVG funding authorized by the Coronavirus Aid, Belief and Economic Security Act, known as the CARES Act. These special CDVG CV funds are to be used to prevent, prepare for and respond to the coronavirus pandemic in the Wasatch Front AOG region and to mitigate the impacts of COVID-19. Weber County is ineligible entity to apply to the Utah Department of Workforce Services for funding under the Community Development Block Grant Small Cities Program, a federally funded program administered by the State of Utah Housing and Community Development Division. Wasatch Front is eligible to apply through Weber County for CDVG funding authorized by the CARES Act, provided that Wasatch Front Regional Council meets the applicable program requirements. The grant money must be spent on projects benefiting primarily low moderate income persons. The Wasatch Front region is expected to receive approximately $499,000 and it is possible that additional money may be allocated to our region in the coming months. Eligible activities must prevent and respond to the spread of infectious diseases such as the coronavirus disease. Examples of eligible CDVG CV activities include but are not limited to constructing a facility for testing, diagnosis or treatment. Avoid job loss caused by business closures related to social distancing by providing short-term working capital assistance to small businesses to enable retention of jobs held by low and moderate income persons and provide equipment, supplies and materials necessary to carry out a public service. The 2019 and 2020 state annual action plans are under revision to add this CDVG CV funding and the activities that will be carried out. All comments will be considered by the Wasatch Front Regional Council when determining the project to apply for. Questions? Um, if you could please state your name and where you're from for the official minutes and posting.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions?
I don't have any commis, I don't, I don't have any questions with regards to this WFRC presentation, Chair Forre.
Laura, aye.
Commissioner Jenkins?
I'm okay with it.
So Christie, just so clarification, so this will be uh administered by the Wasatch Front Regional Council?
Correct. Um, so Weber County and Wasatch Front Regional Council will have a contract for uh the portions of money that will be um allocated through Wasatch Front Regional Council and should we decide to um partner with any other agencies, Weber County will have contracts uh with those entities as well, but WFRC will do all the administration of all the funds.
Thank you. And I think you mentioned that one uh possible allocation of these dollars would be to small businesses, to help uh small businesses stay open. Is that correct or?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Members of the public that may be with us? Seeing none. Christie, or is that to conclude your presentation?
It does. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much. With that, uh, we've heard the report. I'll look for a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene as a public meeting.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye, we're now adjourned out of our public hearing and reconvene back in a public meeting. I'll just make uh the notation that we had the public hearing and no action was taken at this point in time. We appreciate the information from Christie Dahlberg for the CBD uh allocation of funding. Uh, Commissioners, we're now to the fun part of our agenda. Commissioner comments? I know this is what you wait for every week, so. We're now open for Commissioner comments as we conclude our last April meeting for uh 2020.
The fun part of our meeting.
Commissioner Harvey, I, I, yeah, funnest part of our meeting.
No, I'm just, just delighted, just to be delighted to be here, thank you.
It's good that, uh, you know, it's good you are delighted and I appreciate your attendance, so. Commissioner Jenkins, comments?
Well, uh, you can see our uh, our uh business uh economics are starting to come back a little bit right now. You see a few more businesses opening up and a few more things changing and little by little, things are starting to change. So hopefully next week, uh, when we open things up, people will continue to be safe, continue to distance and uh we can get this thing back going again. That's all my comments.
Exactly. Yeah, and I'll thank you. And uh as Commissioner Harvey said earlier, uh, last Wednesday, we announced uh in conjunction with Davis Morgan, what I called the soft opening. Uh, in my opinion, it's the best decision uh in the current time that we could make as a commission. And we give the opportunity for our small businesses, our big businesses to start the process of getting back into full operation to get that light bulb turned on all the way. Uh, Commissioner Harvey, even though we know that that may take a while, but uh people are out there, people are ready to get back. Uh, as we've said from the start, and this team was very instrumental in making decisions, that we were gonna be data-driven. We're gonna look at the numbers and make decisions in the best interest of the public and the best interest of our businesses. I feel confident, Commissioners, we've done that. I appreciate uh all your help. Uh, Commissioner Harvey Jenkins, our full team that were involved with this, the Health Department as we move forward. Uh, obviously, this is a gonna be a process that's gonna take a daily um look at to make sure that we are maintaining our numbers and uh that be prepared to take a step back if we need to. I'm hopeful that that doesn't and won't need to happen. I'm hopeful that we can get these businesses back uh in a safe operating environment as quickly as possible. Uh, again, Commissioners, I appreciate uh all your help as we move forward through this process. Thank you very much. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second? Undebatable, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we're now adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody that participated this morning.
Thank you.